This is the Public Informational Hearing, Special Town Meeting, Monday, March 18. The electors and citizens qualified to vote in town meetings in the town of Ashford, Connecticut, are hereby notified and warned that a public informational hearing and special town meeting will be held Monday, March 18, 2024 at 6:30 PM in the lower level meeting room of the town office building in person and virtually via Zoom. The public informational hearing will be for the purpose of choosing a moderator and receiving comment on the following items. One, receive information on the proposed reallocation of $74,611 of American Rescue Plan funds remaining in underspent projects and adjustments necessitated by projects that were overspent. All projects have been approved at duly noticed town meetings. A, Knowton Hall, installation of mini-split heating slash air conditioning units, the remaining balance is $950. B, Knowton Hall redesign and installation of paving blocks to ensure safer access to the building, remaining balance $37,257. C, Ashford Volunteer Fire Department, purchase of Hearst tool, Jaws of Life, remaining balance $520. Ashford Volunteer Fire Department, upgrade and installation of mini-split heating, air conditioning units, in the amount remaining balance $3,689. Ashford Volunteer Fire Department, replacement and/or addition to the Ashford Volunteer Fire Department supply of emergency equipment, remaining balance $526. F, Town Office Building, installation of handicap access mechanism to front door building, remaining balance $703. Town Office Building, interior and exterior lighting upgrades, remaining balance $2,109. DPW transfer station, installation of fencing and gate, remaining balance $200. Housing Authority rental subsidy, remaining balance $2,012. Broadband buildout, remaining balance $32,490. Item 10, Town Office Building, security upgrades, remaining balance $3,860. Item L, DPW slash Ashford School gasoline dispenser, this project was overspent in the amount of $8,124. Item M, Social Service Department, appropriation for family support, overspent by $1,499. And item N, Town Buildings, Systems Analysis, overspent by $82. Following discussion of the above, on the above funding adjustments, the special town meeting will be called to order for the purpose of acting on the reallocation and appropriation of American Rescue Plan funds. You must attend the meeting in person to be eligible to vote on the following appropriations. Choosing of a moderator for said meeting. Number two, approving, approved reallocation of $74,611 to future projects, meeting criteria established by the U.S. Department of the Treasury. Three, approval of the allocation of ARPA funding for the following projects. A, approval of an additional appropriation of the amount of $500 to supplement funds remaining, $9,825, in the Ashford Volunteer Fire Department request to purchase four defibrillators. Long day. Defibrillators. These units are intended to be available in the Town Office Building, Knowton Memorial Hall, Ashford Senior Center, and the Ashford Public Works Garage. B, approval of an appropriation in the amount of $25,000 for creation of a new Town of Ashford website. C, approval of an appropriation in the amount of $27,000 for the repair and resurfacing of the Ashford Memorial Park basketball courts. D, approval of funds in the amount of $3,900 to replace the powder towel located in the foyer of the Ashford Senior Center. The above items will be voted on separately by those attending the special town meeting in person only. Catherine Silversmith for selectmen, Roger Phillips, selectmen, Bill Fellini, selectmen. So again, thank you all for coming. I don't want to be long-winded here. So we need a moderator for the first part of this, the public informational hearing. Do I have any motions?
I nominate Catherine Silversmith.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul.
Move the nominations to be closed.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
And then all in favor of?
Aye.
Me?
Aye.
Yeah, you just don't want to do it. Thank you. Okay. So on the first part of this, this reallocation of the $74,611 of American Rescue Plan funds remaining in underspent projects and adjustments for projects that were overspent is really a housekeeping exercise. And I'm really glad that we're doing it at this point in time because we do have a few other things that are on the second part of this, the special town meeting, that we would like to pursue. So shall we go through each of these and talk about them, or would you like to do it otherwise?
Could I make a?
Suggestion?
Quick comment?
Sure.
And then maybe a suggestion. I know there are considerable discrepancies on a couple of the projects that we were projecting to do or have completed. And the process is called by the ARPA requirements, called for us to get a minimum of two bids on any of the projects that we're proposing. And we do that. And don't have any control of what the dollar amounts are coming, but use that as a baseline for our judgment on what we're going to bring before the town. And as Catherine had mentioned, all of these items that you see listed here were holded on individually at town meeting. For instance, the biggest difference in numbers here is for the new pavers out in front of Knowton Hall. Our high cost that came in was $70,000. We ended up bringing in and realizing a savings of more than $37,000, going with the lowest bid and with a local business that we had. So those are the sort of things that we, they're natural adjustments at the end. Luckily, in our favor, most of them were on the high side for us with credits. There were a couple that we went over just by the fact that whatever the circumstance was that we could. My suggestion would be, Catherine, for the sake of time, if anybody had any questions about any particular ones, maybe we could try to answer them?
Sure.
Or just move on.
I'd also like to add to your statement. I wouldn't call these discrepancies. I'd call these, in some cases, some pretty creative efforts by people to make it cost less than what had been estimated. And so I applaud the people who were able to do that. So let's look at a couple, okay, or whatever you'd like to look at. The, if you don't have specific questions, I have a couple I can highlight. Any specific questions at this time? Okay. So in the case of the, where we've, was it replacement and/or addition to the Ashford Volunteer Fire Department supply of emergency equipment, remaining balance. If I understand correctly, Paul, you got a grant to pay for some of that equipment?
No, on the equipment line, it was just a matter of, just when we did the original estimates, some of those were higher because we chose a different vendor. Some actually did the purchase. If you're referring to the E-bank portion on the second page?
Yeah, it is on the second.
That is, that is the case, yes.
Yeah.
If you want, I can briefly talk about the three items, just so people understand.
That'd be great.
Okay. So with the Hearst tool, the Jaws of Life, that was just when, when we got the quote, obviously they put in a number because we didn't know when delivery was. So when we placed the order and the item arrived, it was inside the window, so we were lucky enough to.
Could you do me a thing? Could you come off, turn your chair kind of like this so the, because we know it's not, for anybody who listens on the recording.
So with the Hearst tool, the Jaws of Life, it was just a matter of, there was, the vendor had an additional pad in there for the quote. So when we made the purchase, we made the purchase in a timely fashion, so that additional $500, which I believe it was originally $16,000 and change, so. The upgrades to the mini splits, the original quote was for a different manufacturer of the unit, and we decided to go with a different unit that actually is more efficient and is technically, is actually a split. The originals were just for air conditioning units. And in that, I should add that we also were able to make sure that the electrical system was upgraded correctly in the firehouse to operate those splits in the event of a power outage. So that's actually a pretty significant savings with all the work we did. And the emergency supplies, like I said, we just, as when we did the original quotes, we went with two different vendors. And then when we purchased the equipment, we compared vendors, and sometimes we didn't go with necessarily the original quoted vendor because we thought the product the other vendor had to have.
Very good. And these quotes have been out there for quite a while.
This is like two years old.
Some of them got refreshed as we went along. One of the other ones was the redesign installation of the paving blocks to ensure safer access to the building. And I have to credit Bill with working with, who ended up being our lowest, our lower bidder to actually get them in and do a nice job and get them in in timely fashion.
One of the ways that we did that, we found that there were a number of things that we were able to incorporate in, within our own public works department, doing, like doing the demolition, doing the base grading and everything else. So in addition to picking up a lot of time, because we had, one of our bid proposals came in, they weren't going to be able to do it, touch it for a year and a half, and it was a safety concern. So by going with our local public works, we saved money and a lot of time on that. Public works should be commended on that.
So, and where we went over, it was not, I would not say in any truly significant amount. The gasoline dispenser, maybe you can help me with that one because?
Yeah, my recollection, it was a year ago, so forgive me if I don't remember everything on it. But my recollection was it became a building requirement. Our building inspector inquired a stronger base with the foundation, the concrete foundation. And I think that's where most of the additional cost. There were some also, some additional costs that we put in with safety precautions from the electrical systems.
Okay. And I have to thank Chris Avicott because she's the one who has been monitoring these and, you know, providing us with information on what the balances were and pulled this together for us so that we could do this kind of housekeeping. So in the case of, so this is explaining what this is. And we're just looking at where we do the, a vote for what we're doing with these. So at this point in time, do we need a vote in order to formally close these out? Just, this is just letting you know? Yes, Mr. Silversmith?
Just a couple of genuine questions. Again, and I've heard this before many times.
You need to speak up too, sorry.
Just a couple of quick questions. One is the, when do the ARPA funds need to be used by?
They need to be, first of all, we need to have the plans for all the ARPA funds completed by the end of this year, calendar year, December 31st. We need to use up the rest of the funds by the end of next year.
Twenty-five.
Yeah.
And also, and this might jump into the special meeting on the backside, but the new proposals, new items that we're going to be discussing or being talked about?
Yes.
On the Quanspa project, does that use up all of the additional that was saved from the savings on these items, the $70?
What we have is, we still have projects that have either not been started or are in progress, so we're not sure where all of those will end up.
So just.
So in terms of a solid number for that?
It's a snapshot of where we are right now, what we're doing.
That's all it is right now.
Thank you.
I also do have a question. Troy, move on.
Yes, and your name, please?
Rod Lomata.
Yes.
So for items like the Knowton Hall paving stones and the broadband buildout, where those are pretty significant savings by going with a lower cost bid? Did we, is there any sort of independent verification that those, you know, lower cost options are going to last long term and they're not lower quality options?
If I could just touch on that.
Sure.
All of these projects, we abide by our own rules with building rules and everything.
Standard rules.
Closely supervised by our building department for base and everything, so we did not compromise quality for the sake of dollars. In fact, in several instances, they were improved over what was being proposed.
Yeah, we had kind of addressed the issue with the reason that they had the upheaval. They had totally inadequate base and they put a lot more stone, a lot better base in there.
Yes, Sharon.
Have you been answered? I was just looking at this. So an answer to your question about exactly how we proceed here. The hearing is for the purpose of choosing a moderator and receiving comment on the following items. So for the hearing, we're just doing the commenting, and then following the discussion, we're calling the special, so you should close the hearing, then call the special town meeting to order for the purpose of acting on the reallocation and appropriation.
Thank you for the clarification.
And then we do the nominating.
Okay. So do I have to close the public hearing before I?
Good idea.
Conduct the elect? Just wanted to confirm. I'm actually not used to doing the two together.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Are there any other questions that the people have? Okay.
About 6:50.
I can see. So do we have a motion closing? Is that how we do it, or just close it?
I think you just close it.
All right. That portion of the meeting is closed. All right. So now with this one, I am assuming I'm still the moderator? Or do I have to do it all over? Choosing of a moderator for said meeting. Would someone like to make a motion?
I will nominate Catherine Silversmith.
That's such a surprise.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And all in favor of me doing it? Thank you. Okay. Approved reallocation of $74,611 to future projects, meeting criteria established by the U.S. Department of Treasury. Approval of the allocation of ARPA funding for the following projects. So is, so one is to approve the reallocation of that $74,611. So can we have a motion for that? Can, thank you, Paul. And do we have a second? Any discussion?
I think what you do is you move the motion, then we go into the discussion.
Okay.
And then, and then we ask for a vote.
No, I don't think so.
No, after the second, any discussion? And then you have it out.
So we have discussion.
Yeah. Okay, so discussion now?
Yep.
Anybody? Okay.
Again, just to review, this is for the D-Fibs.
Oh, no.
No, no, this is a sale. It's okay to use that money for one thing.
Yeah, well, absolutely.
Everyone's going.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And she's recording, you're recording votes, right?
Well, I'm waiting to see if there's any against.
Yeah. Any against? Any abstain? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay. So let's look at these. Approval of the allocation of ARPA funding for the following projects, and we'll decide each one individually. Approval of an additional appropriation of the amount of $500 to supplement, supplement funds remaining, $9,825, in the Ashford Volunteer Fire Department request to purchase four defibrillators. These units are intended to be available in the Town Office Building, Knowton Memorial Hall, Ashford Senior Center, and the Ashford Public Works Garage.
So moved.
Second.
I've got a second over here with?
This is the fastest second.
Now, any discussion?
If you want me to explain it briefly?
Do it briefly. That sounds good.
So we were, after the original public town meeting to approve the funds for the replacement of the defibrillators for the fire department, we received grant funding from a local business that allowed us to purchase four of the units. So in our research in the units prior to that and prior to requesting, we discovered that there are buildings in town that do not have defibrillators. So the department discussed it, and we thought that it would be good if we used those appropriated funds to put units in the buildings, as mentioned, that do not have units already. But one does, but it's outdated. The additional $500 is to cover the taken cost between then and now.
Very good. Paul, any other discussion? Yes, Jeff?
Do those require any type of training, or is it just really direct?
These are literally like, open the box and it's outdated. So, and we will offer training in those buildings, if people in these buildings want it. And that was part of the, when I wrote the letter to their board of selectmen. The fire department will get them into the building and move on to them. The pads are good for four years when you open the box. They are literally completely, they're called semi-automatic because you have to push the button and make the shot, and that's it. So, pretty picture, you know?
Very good.
Paul, so the, the general maintenance or servicing of them will be covered by the department?
Yeah, it'll be part of our service.
Because I know we had some questions where the responsibilities were for.
Yeah, well, that, we, we'll go, they'll be the same identical units that we use, so when they come out to service them, they will go around and will come here and will pipe in.
Now, just for Knowton Hall, where will the unit be in Knowton Hall?
We'll have to discuss that with the town.
Okay. Good.
Someplace accessible.
Same in this building too.
Yeah. Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion passes. Okay, thank you. Approval of an appropriation of the amount of $25,000 for the creation of a new Town of Ashford website. So just very briefly, this website will allow the departments to basically update their own portions of the website, and it will make ease of finding things just so much better. In addition, it will also support features to trigger emails to people when a meeting notice is posted, should you get on a list that you want meeting notices for that kind of meeting. Also minutes, same thing. And also, it will send out texts, same thing. So it may ultimately be an option to replace TextMyGov. We need to get it in place, and it'll take a while to get it in place. So, Sherry, I know you've been on the committee that spearheaded this, and they did a yeoman's bunch of work on putting together the RFP, going through a very measured process, assessing the vendors and the capabilities. And would you like to say anything about it?
We brought this first to the board of selectmen, we started working on this in the office. And we looked at seven different vendors, and there were some that were a lot more money, some that were out of the country and Dubai. There were some that simply their services were not up to what we needed, of the caliber that we needed. Because we want improvement, we want the same thing right now. So this, the company that we recommended to the board of selectmen, they, their focus is municipalities, municipalities, like it's, they, they know exactly what we need. And they have, in this, in Wyndham County especially, they have.
The Louder?
I'm sorry, they, they, they are the vendor of choice of many of the towns in Wyndham County and the surrounding area, including Wyndham. And we also went and got feedback from those towns that are using them. And the feedback was almost completely positive. And one of the most useful, it was a very long response, came from our treasurer, Sher Susie, who also is working in Sterling. And they are in the process of switching over to this company. And so she was very inclusive in her praise of them. She thought they were great. So that, I felt like that was a really honest, she's been in the office. So it's, and then so she's, it's a very recent review of exactly how it was working out now. So I thought that, so, you know, it's kind of like the magic eight ball, you know, all signs point to yes. It looked like it was truly the best choice. And so that was our recommendation, and we were glad the selectmen agreed.
And I have over 40 years of IT, so, and managing these kinds of projects. So I cannot tell you how impressed I was with Sherry, Karen Zulik, and Mike Damato, who are the little spearheading committee, who put together the RFP and went through a pretty rigorous process to select the vendor. So I'm hoping that this will be approved. We'll see what you all feel about it. Yes?
This, is this a one-time fee? Does it include a certain number of years of maintenance?
That fee includes this year, the upcoming year, and then after that, there is a maintenance fee.
Do we know how much it is and what?
We do know how much it is, and it's, it's more than what we pay now, but you know, you get, we pay for, what we're getting with it is every four years, you get a whole redesign of the site, which is something, we're not even sure how long we've had this one, but it's been way too long, so.
And that maintenance fee is what, $7,000 a year?
Yeah.
And the first year with everything that they're doing, everything is included? Everything?
Yeah, migration, implementation, hosting, the first year is $24,447, and the annual recurring fee is $7,314, beginning in year two.
And this process will take three to six months, depending on everything. But what it will do, one of the other things is, it will allow the departments to go out and put their own stuff up there for their own departments. We really, that's going to be a real saving thing.
It'd be much more immediate.
Yeah. So at this point in time, yes, another question?
Does, is there a recommendation for having some type of a singular webmaster at the purchasing location or anything like that? Or you're all serving as webmasters for your departments?
You're all, meaning?
Meaning, as first electman just said, that each individual department is able to post for what they want to have, with the, the children through a webmaster to put it on locally?
Right, that, so the department heads will be responsible for their own page, whatever that works on. If there are some that aren't feeling comfortable with that, then they will get assistance from us to help them. We will.
Us?
Karen, Mike, and I were just sort of an informal, we don't have an IT department.
Right.
So there was, we can be like, first stop, I suppose, and then it goes to Savage. There's, there's, that's what we got toward that.
But someone's like, that is not part of the support that the, who purchased the vendor we're purchasing from went off for that first year?
Well, they can go to them, they can go, yeah, they can absolutely, they can. Oh, gosh, yes.
I didn't listen through the four functions, I didn't hear, I didn't catch.
Oh, yeah.
The other part of this is, we'll have policies and procedures for how things are put on that website, what kinds of things can be put on that website, and what the mechanisms are to get your stuff onto the website.
And one more B to that, if we were to go onto the Wyndham site, would we see some of the functionality of where they input with this company?
I'm not sure, actually, we're living in this attitude right now. I was, they had it in the Bonn home, so they were very, very proud of moving. And I was looking at some of the examples that interested me, which the one that I really liked was the one with Mass. It's just because it's in another state doesn't mean they're not similar to us, and they, we get to choose, you know, with the layout and all like that. The one thing I will say is that we're not, what we can't do is let some of the peripheral things like, we're not going to let the Boy Scouts. some of the peripheral things like, we're not going to let the Boy Scouts jump into the, you know what I mean? It's definitely departments, the departments in and out, certainly responsible people will be working with it.
It's going to provide a lot more flexibility. And we'll make sure there's rigor around what can be put out there and how you go about doing it. And we do have a webmaster, we have someone who helps, supports our current website with getting things out there. And, and then we work with Savage or Madcap, I think it's called, that is Madcom?
Yes.
They're the ones that we have our current
Yeah.
I love it when they come up with the names for these places. So, anyway. Moving along. Any other questions?
I'll make the motion to approve the designation of twenty-five thousand dollars from ARPA for the establishment of a new
We have a second.
Town of Ashford website.
Now a second out there? At this point, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And Sherry, thank you. Approval of an appropriation, the amount of twenty-seven thousand dollars for the repair and resurfacing of the Ashford Memorial Park basketball courts. So how do we do the motion? And a second, and then we can have the discussion, make sure that we put that right. So is our motion to approve this?
I'll approve.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you.
Seven, seven.
Okay. Any comments, any comments or questions? I can give you a very, very brief thing on this. I actually went out and walked the basketball courts a few days ago, just to take a good look and make sure I understood. And we have crevasses that are in the middle. And we certainly have programs that are held down there, and everything from a bicycling program to some basketball things. It's really a large area. We have four basketball courts, so it's a great activity. We originally had this on the capital improvement projects list. And then went, wait a minute, this is, fits within the ARPA categories, they have four primary categories. And so we looked at it again and went, wait a minute, let's not take the money from capital non-recurring, we have it available in ARPA. So it definitely needs repair, and it needs repair as soon as possible. We took the, I think we took the middle bit, which is to put, I can't remember if it was one or two inches,
Two inches.
Two inches of cover over it. I looked at it, and they're going to have to cut the trench and fill, and then put the two inches over that. So that's what this project is about. Any other questions or concerns, or?
Kurt, I was a painting in the weatherproof storage.
That I wasn't sure about, the painting. I don't remember when we looked at the bid. That was the only thing I wasn't sure of.
Usually it does jump.
I was, it's a professional company. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion passes, thank you, and our kids and adults will thank you as well. Approval of funds to the amount of three, thirty-nine hundred dollars to replace the countertop located in the foyer foyer of the Ashford Senior Center. Can I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you. All right, in this case, that countertop, how many of you go into the Ashford Senior Center? Do you see the countertop? We have things all over, it kind of hides it, but it has been, the Formica or whatever it is, has been coming off for years. It looks terrible, and this also was, no, it wasn't on that of the list. But this is a relatively small amount, that rather than putting in an expense and taxing for it, we can do it through ARPA. So do we have any questions about this? Maybe they'll pick a different color, that would be nice. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion passes, thank you. At that point, at this point, I want to thank you all for coming, all the many of you, thank you for coming, I hope. And this meeting is adjourned. So we go upstairs, or how do you want to?
Do it right here.
All right, I'll try and miss the thing.
We've got a selectmen's meeting that's to follow, and you're all certainly welcome to stay with us if you'd like.